Good morning, everybody. It's nine o'clock. So we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order with respect to roll call. I guess first, before I get started, there should be agenda packets in the back there on the bookcase if anybody is looking for an agenda for their meeting. Roll call, it looks like everyone is here except Travis, which is why I'm chairing the meeting today. Brings us to item number one, introduction and welcome of new planning employees. PJ?
Good morning, PJ Conover, Director of Plan Department. We have two new Planner Ones in our department. Our Planner Two, Frank, who you've all have met, is moving back to Iowa with his wife. So we had the opportunity to hire two Planner Ones at the same time. We're still at eight staff. We've asked for an extra staff, but that won't start until January. But I'll let them introduce themselves to you, and then we can get on with the meeting.
Hi, I'm Christina Provedi, and I'm happy to be here with you guys, so.
Christina comes from KTM, right?
KTM Design.
Yep.
I'm Cody Sack, and I'm happy to be here as well.
And you come, Game and Fish?
Game and Fish.
I didn't catch your name, sir.
Cody Sack.
Cody, okay.
All right. Christina will be working mainly on the planning side with Cassie in that division, and Cody comes with environmental background, and he'll be on that side with Brittany. But you'll see him quite a lot up here.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Next agenda item is approval of the July 9th, 2018 minutes. Has everybody had a chance to review those, and are there any comments to those minutes?
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Motion and second to approve the July 9th minutes. Any discussion on the issue? My minor note was that my last name had a C instead of an S on the note. I wasn't here, though. That was on the election of the officers. Any other changes? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number three is approval of the agenda. We have items, we have consent items four through thirteen, and regular items fourteen through, oh, wait a minute. Missing my next page. Fourteen through nineteen with the county board report, items from the staff, items from the membership, and adjournment after that. Any changes to the agenda? If none, I'd entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Brings us to the consent agenda. PJ?
Consent agenda. The following items have been placed on the consent agenda for actions to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by a planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of the planning commissioner recommendations to the Pankin County Board of Commissioners who will make the final decision. Item four is conditional use permit review 0514 for Desiree Kerzaff to review a single wide manufactured home as a single-family residence in a suburban residential district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit 0514 with eight conditions. Item five, conditional use permit review 1615 for Tom and Lynn Distler to review a vacation home, recreational vehicle to be used as a temporary residence while building a single-family residence in a limited agriculture district. Staff recommends to continue the review of conditional use permit 1615 to the October 22nd, 2018 Planning Commission meeting. Item six, conditional use permit review 1620 for Perry and Vicki Van Newkirk to review a pole barn constructed prior to a residential structure on the subject property in a low-density residential district. Staff recommends to continue conditional use permit 1620 to the September 24th, 2018 Planning Commission meeting. Item seven, conditional use permit review 1626 for Terry Sager to review a recreational vehicle to be used as a temporary living quarters while building a single-family residence on the subject property in a low-density residential district. Staff recommends to end conditional use permit 1626. Item eight, conditional use permit review 1720 for Melissa Masters to review a mobile large animal home veterinary practice on the subject property in a general agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit 1720 with ten conditions. Item nine, conditional use permit review 1725 for Donald Wyakowski, Lisa Wyakowski as the agent, to review one pole barn and three greenhouse structures in a suburban residential district, one pole barn structure in a suburban residential district, and to allow one pole barn structure to remain when the principal structure is removed from the property in the future. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit 1725 with nine conditions. Item 10, construction permit review 9929 for Pete Lean and Sons to review construction permit in a general agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of construction permit 9929 with eight conditions. Item 11, construction permit review 0511 for Pete Lean and Sons to review the extension of a construction permit for reclamation of a quarry located on the subject property in a general agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of construction permit 0511 with ten conditions. Item 12, construction permit review 1709 for the city of Rapid City, Banner and Associates as the agent, to review the installation of a 12-inch water main to provide water quality and supply looping capabilities to the east Rapid Water Users Region and Rapid City Regional Airport. Staff recommends approval of construction permit 1709 with seven conditions. I'm sorry, approval of the extension of construction permit 1709 with seven conditions. Item 13, conditional use permit 1829 for Scott Woodvee to allow a single-family residence in a highway service district. Staff recommends to continue conditional use permit 1825 to the August 13th, 2018 Planning Commission meeting.
Does staff have any items that they would wish to pull from the consent calendar?
Yes, sir.
Does the membership have any items that they would wish to pull from the consent agenda?
Yes, I would like to review item number eight.
Eight.
I would like to pull items number 10 and 11 for the purposes of abstaining.
Yeah, I figured those were coming off.
And then are there any items from the public? Again, the consent agenda is a group of items, and they're all going to be voted on with one vote. So if you have any items in the consent agenda that you would like to talk about, discuss with the group, those need to be pulled off of the agenda for consideration. Okay. Seeing none, so the consent agenda then is items four through seven, nine, and 12 and 13, leaving out items eight, 10, and 11. I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Brings us to item number eight.
Good morning, Brittany Molitor, Environmental Planning Supervisor. Did you have a specific question?
Well, I guess I'm concerned about the letters from the neighbors regarding the traffic. I don't know if there are speed limit requirements across an easement. I mean, generally, I would think there aren't, but, you know, are there. And the neighbor indicated the number of vehicles they saw crossing the road, concerned about speed and carelessness. And the notes had indicated that the applicant would provide the traffic count of the number of vehicles that she had traveling across her property, I believe in 2017.
Okay, I did talk to her. She couldn't be here today, so if there's specific concerns with it, I would prefer her to be able to be here. I can just only communicate what she had communicated to me. She didn't think that she had that many appointments that were actually at her residence during that time because she had just purchased the property. She had indicated to me that she had quite a few people personally out there to help her with some of her cattle and building fence out there. So she had some concerns about what is personal and what is, as far as the business, and how she would be able to separate that other than knowing what was on her appointment book. She didn't think that there was probably more than 20 appointments that were scheduled at her facility. When I did do a site visit out there, it was quiet. There wasn't even one person on the road the whole time I was there. Her property was clean. There was no indication that there was even any kind of business there at all when I was there. I did read the letters, and I did look it over, but when I look at the conditions on what the conditional use permit was, she was still meeting her conditions. So that's why we recommended approval. But if there is concern with the planning commission with the traffic on that road with her conditional use permit, I would prefer that she would be here specifically, and we could continue that till she could, if that's the wish of the planning commission.
Are there any people in the audience with issues regarding this item?
It appeared to me from the letters that they were more along, they were trying to send maybe a message more than anything. They said some language in there, like, "Just want to make it clear." You know, they don't want to affect her business. They just want to make sure that she slows down. And so have those letters specifically been given to her? Is she aware of them?
Yes, and they have been sent to her in the staff reports, just like what you guys receive. And I did speak to her on the phone concerning the concern.
She understands the concerns of her neighbors, then?
Yes, and she, this has been continued several times because she actually wanted to be here and be available, but something has come up personally with her that she just can't be here today. But she's willing to be if you guys choose, so.
Well, I would like to hear from her personally.
Okay.
Because, again, the letter indicated that they attempted it several times to meet with her, and they rescheduled meetings to accommodate her schedule, and she still was not able to show up. And I realize people have personal issues and things that come up, but I guess I would like to hear from her personally. And that's just my opinion.
So are you moving to continue this item, or what action would you like to have on this item?
Well, I would like it to be continued until the lady can be here to, you know, I'd like to hear her explanation and her intent to control the speed, you know, of the vehicles. If the number of cars traveling were not related to the business and were related to her moving on to this structure, that's one thing, but if it's an ongoing thing, it sounds as if it goes against, you know, the atmosphere of the neighborhood.
So what date would you, so I can communicate that with her? Because she's, you know, busy with her veterinary business and things like that, so I'd like to give her some notice.
Sure, whatever date works for her.
The next meeting? Or what are you thinking?
Let me try the second meeting in August, because the next meeting is the weekend after the rally, so I don't know what her schedule would be like. So at least a month, give her at least a month.
Yeah, I will be here every meeting, so whatever meeting she can accommodate would be great.
Okay.
But again, that's just my thoughts.
So I don't want to go there, and you'll need to make the motion to continue this item to that date.
The August 27th? That's the next, or the second meeting in August? Is that one?
Whatever works for her is fine with me.
All right. I don't know that right now.
Sure, yeah, I understand.
So did you just want to continue it till the applicant is available to be present? So it could be at any future meeting?
Yes, I move that we continue it until the applicant can be present.
Okay. Motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion on the item?
Rich, I don't know if these issues with the traffic really have much to do with the permit itself. Are we just trying to get her here just to get her statement about the traffic issue, or is the traffic issue at all related to the conditional use permit in the first place?
It doesn't relate to her specific conditions and her conditional use permit. I have talked to her about it. Like I said, she did have some concerns with what was personal and, you know, part of her business. And like I said before, she didn't think that she had probably more than 20 appointments in that year at her facility or her place.
Based on that, I feel like we should just not continue this, because I think what needs to be said about the traffic and all that's already been done. That's just my opinion.
Yeah, the notes I read indicated she would bring to us the traffic count, so I didn't know she provided that to you.
Well, it wasn't the traffic count, it was the number of appointments that she had. She, I mean, that would be the only way that she could differentiate between what was, you know, according to them, what the traffic is and things. The only thing that she could...
I understand. Did she tell you what the, how many appointments there were?
She thought there was around 20, but she had to confirm that to get the exact number. But she thought, she spends most of her time away from the facility.
I see, sure.
And the only time that she comes back to it is typically in emergency situations. She says she has a few individuals that bring domestic animals to her on a somewhat infrequent basis, but that was what she had indicated to me.
Yeah, I understand.
Motion on the floor still remains. Jim?
Yeah. You know, I think it's a minor inconvenience for the party involved. I realize she's a businesswoman, she's busy and so forth, but in order to get this cleared up, she needs to appear for, at her discretion almost, for a brief period of time. I think it would be good for her to do this simply to establish some relationship with the neighbors, and from the information we have, it sounds like either the doctor is unreasonable, or the neighbors are unreasonable, or they're just not communicating. And I think it would be constructive simply to defer this until she could arrive and at least present her case. I'm inclined to endorse this clearly, but I don't think it's a major inconvenience for either of the parties to continue this until she can at least give her position on this issue. So my feeling would be that we should continue it.
Any further discussion? Okay. Motion is to continue conditional use permit review 1720 to a date to be determined after you consult with the applicant. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Brings us to item number 10. And I guess for my position, I'm just removing to abstain of voting on this issue, but I don't have any questions or concerns with the item.
So can we...
I just need a motion for...
To approve.
For approval.
I'd move for approval on item number, what is it, 10?
10.
Yeah, 10.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion on item number 10?
Why was it pulled off of the consent agenda?
Because I work for Pete Lean and Sons, and it would be wrong for me to vote for it.
Oh, okay, thank you. I didn't, couldn't hear that.
Yeah, no, no problem. I didn't indicate that, but that, yeah, that's the reason for that specifically. Where are we at? Motion and second. Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Brings us to item number 11. Same exact reason on item number 11. I don't have any concerns. Simply need to abstain from voting.
I'll move approval of item 11.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, signify by saying aye, voting on the motion.
Aye.
Those opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Just now brings us to item 14.
Item 14 was before you at the last planning commission meeting, and the planning commission had directed the applicant to see if she could meet a three-foot setback and have a garage constructed smaller to meet that. I did speak with her last week, and she's actually here in the audience also, but she has indicated that she could do that and meet that. So staff is recommending, I had previously recommended that it be a five-foot setback, but with the discussion from the last planning commission meeting and with the applicant, I'm recommending to reduce the minimum front yard setback from 15 feet to three feet with two conditions.
I wasn't here for the meeting, and so I'll try not to rehash everything, but it was, the highway department indicated that they would not be in favor of that because they said that looked like there's plenty of room in the backyard, and I'm assuming then access to that garage could come off of Heather Lane instead of Gypsy Road. What was the discussion regarding that?
I believe that there are some utilities back there. I know Heather's here, so she can probably speak to it again, but there are some utilities back there and some access issues as far as how the garage needs to be situated on there. And that's why staff had recommended the five feet to at least give, you know, room for the right-of-way, because I know the city had concerns with maintenance and things that they'd be encroaching in the right-of-way, that there wasn't room to do any maintenance or construction. So that was kind of the compromise essentially to that, but Ms. Johnson can...
So where the garage is proposed to sit on the property, is there any, is there any utility easements within this three feet? Certainly, there would be out a...
No, there is not. I did verify that with a plat. There are no easements. There actually also is a large drainage area. That's the second picture on there, behind there. So the, you know, if you look at the property and the drainage and the way that the cul-de-sac is to the property behind that, the likelihood of that being, that Heather Lane being developed through is fairly unlikely.
No, I would agree, I would agree with that. I don't think that that'll get pushed through, but there are no utilities then that run on the northwest side of Heather Lane then, and there's no easements that are, that need to be vacated? There's none of that?
No, the only thing is, there is, West River Electric does have, they do have lines that go in behind her house, and they just had asked that she had, has an eight-foot setback from that, and with her construction of her garage at 32 feet, she will be able to maintain that eight feet.
Can I, may I ask? That's what I was wondering about. Does that need to be stated as a condition, that that eight-foot distance between the WREA transformer and the garage is maintained, or do you think that is, doesn't need to be stated?
I mean, if you feel it necessary, that certainly can be added as a condition.
I would be in favor of that.
Yeah.
Any other discussion on the item? Okay. I would entertain a motion on the issue.
I'll move approval with the, with the conditions and with the addition of the eight-inch clearance for the WREA transformer be maintained at the, you know, the back of the garage, whatever direction that is.
You mean eight feet?
Yeah, it's eight feet.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion on the item? Seeing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Those opposed? Same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Brings us to item number 15. PJ?
Sure. Item 15 is rezone 1804 and Comprehensive Plan Amendment 1804, which is to rezone five acres from limited agriculture district to suburban residential district and to amend the Pankin County Comprehensive Plan from limited agriculture to suburban residential. The applicant is Gary Baldwin, and surveying agent is Fissland Surveying, and there is a representative from the agent here today. This is located in the platting jurisdiction of Box Elder, as our understanding that the applicant is looking to subdivide the property through the city of Box Elder. It, being zoned limited agriculture right now, that is a 10-acre minimum, so the applicant's requested change brings it down to the required minimum for the requested zoning district. There was a, there is a conditional use permit 8612 to allow a mobile home on the property. Again, it's from 1986. There are existing structures on the subject property, mobile homes, sheds, and a wellhouse all appear to have been put there prior to 1994 and of no concern at this point. It is not located in the floodhazard area, no open violations. It is also located in the city's septic jurisdiction. It is also located in the approach zone, Title 14, Code of Federal Regulations, CFR Part 77. That's for the regional airport. They just are concerned with structures, and the FAA wants to know what's going in. So staff has developed a memo for the landowners to sign to acknowledge that they're aware that they're located in that. With that conditional use permit 8612, we're all going to place that on a future agenda as it's underneath somebody else's name, and we're just going to make it current and put it underneath Mr. Baldwin's name. In the application, or on the application, it was requested that the applicant's going to subdivide the property into three lots. That has actually changed since the application has been submitted, so as you can see on the example that's on the screens, they're only looking to propose a two-lot subdivision. And again, this is going to be subdivided through the city of Box Elder. As far as the Comprehensive Plan Amendment goes, the applicant's request does not appear to be in harmony with the Comprehensive Plan. However, it does appear to be in harmony with the existing land use in the area. The future, and that's the key here, so that's why we're recommending approval of the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, because even though the comp plan doesn't match it, the existing land use around it does appear to be in harmony, and therefore, staff would recommend approval of rezone 1804 and Comprehensive Plan Amendment 1804.
Any questions?
I just don't understand the difference between Roman numeral number six and number seven.
Six, oh, okay. Number six, and these are the matching screens. So number six is the current zoning.
Yes.
And then below that is what's called the future land use. Sometimes it's a one-to-one match, but what we do for our staff reports is we go a half-mile from the center of the property, just to give you a general idea of what's there. So the half-mile on your, in your staff reports, you can see there's not much change, but if you look at the broader one on your screen, if you look at the bottom right corner on the future land use, and you can see all that light gray?
Yes.
That's all light industrial.
I see.
Yeah, so there is, sometimes there's huge differences, and in this case, there's really no, not much difference.
Yeah, it just, it just didn't say, it just...
The confusion is that the second one is also labeled current zoning, yeah.
Now, I can see where you are. That's my fault. Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
No, it's okay.
Any other questions? Seeing none. Is there any members from the audience that would like to discuss the issue?
I move for approval as presented.
Motion on item number 15.
Second.
And a second. Further discussion on item number 15. Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Brings us to item number 16.
Item 16 is rezone 1805, which is to rezone 1.04 acres from general agriculture district to suburban residential district. The applicant is Alan and Rosemary Johnson. The applicant is in the audience today if there are any questions. The applicant's request does appear to be in harmony with the Pankin County Comprehensive Plan, and therefore, that's why you only see the rezone and not a Comprehensive Plan Amendment. The lot A and lot... The lot A and lot B, which are pictured here, lot A is, has a single-family residence with attached decks on it, and lot B to the west is currently vacant. There is more to the legal description, but for the sake of simplicity, we just, as indicated in the staff report, we just called them lot A and lot B. The cur, the future, the current zoning for the subject property is general agriculture. The future land use, as you can see, it's all orange, is suburban residential district. This was routed through to interdepartmental review. No R items of concern came back. Since this is, exists in the city's platting jurisdiction, we routed it over to the city planning department, and they indicated that a single-family residential use is appropriate in their, their comparable zoning districts and would recommend approval. The applicant's request to rezone the proposed lot to suburban residential is in conformance with the Pendleton County Comprehensive Plan, and the applicant's request is in harmony with the surrounding zoning and designated use. Therefore, staff would recommend approval of rezone 1805.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions? Any questions from the audience on this item? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion for approval of item 16.
I'll move approval of the rezone 1805.
Second.
Motion and second. Further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Brings us to item number 17. Cassie?
Good morning. Cassie Bolstead, Assistant Planning Director. Item 17 is layout plat 1820. This is a request to create lot three of Jones Ranch subdivision. The applicant is Robert Rao. The landowner is Jones Ranch, and the surveyor is Renner. As this property exists today, it's zoned general agriculture. It's a little over 136 acres and currently vacant. So they are just proposing to pull off a five-acre lot in the southern corner of this. It would be five acres. It does not meet the minimum lot size requirements for a general agriculture district, so they have submitted a rezoning Comprehensive Plan Amendment request, which you'll hear next. And access to this property would be off of Dawkins Road. When this was routed through the interdepartmental review process, there was just a couple items that came up. The county highway department did want an easement for the irrigation ditch shown on the final plat. You can kind of see that irrigation ditch right in this area, that little irrigation ditch that already exists. So they wanted that put on the plat. And then West River Electric commented that they require an eight-foot easement if the power will be constructed with underground construction, or a 25-foot easement if the line will be constructed with overhead construction, and that the easement should be on all lot lines. So there was a condition of approval added in there with regards to that. So for the purposes of a layout plat, staff did not find any significant issues with the applicant's request. So staff is recommending approval of layout plat 1820 with 10 conditions.
Any questions regarding Kathy?
So the new lot, Kathy, is, does it extend all the way along the Dawkins Road frontage? Or does it close in that gap? Or is it just part of that? Is there still going to be some unplatted connection to Dawkins?
There will be a little bit of unplatted connection to Dawkins. It doesn't extend that and stay your southern side.
Okay.
Any further questions? Seeing none. Are there any audience members that would like to discuss this? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve layout plat PL 18-20. Motion?
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor of approving layout plat PL 18-20 signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Brings us to item number 18.
Item number 18 is the rezone and Comprehensive Plan Amendment request for that same property. They're just requesting to rezone the current zoning from general agriculture to low-density residential district and to amend the Comprehensive Plan to change it from limited agriculture district to low-density residential district just for that five-acre parcel. The remaining unplatted portion of this property would still remain general agriculture district. It does appear to be in harmony with the surrounding zoning. The nearest low-density residential current zoning actually abuts the subject property to the west, and the nearest future land use zoning for low-density residential is directly south across Dawkins Road. So it does appear to be in harmony, so staff is recommending approval of rezone 1803 and Comprehensive Plan Amendment 1803.
Okay. Any discussion on the item?
I'd move for approval.
I'll second.
And second. Further discussion on item 18. Seeing none. Is there anybody from the audience that would like to discuss this issue? Seeing none. All those in favor of rezone 18-03 and Comprehensive Plan Amendment CA 18-03 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Brings us to item 19.
Thank you. Item 19, this is conditional use permit 1824. This is a request to bringing, bring an existing mobile home park into compliance, which is Plains View Mobile Manor. The applicant is Plains View Mobile Manor. The property owner's, owner is Ernest Shannon, and the agent is Christine Forrest. As this property exists today, it is zoned suburban residential district. It's 18.76 acres. Access is off of West Gate Road and an internal roadway system. Sewer is provided by the city of Box Elder. There is a private well on a property under common ownership across the street. And it is located entirely within the special flood hazard area, the 100-year flood plain. Currently contains 76 occupied mobile home spaces. There are 119 designated spaces, meaning that there's 119 poured concrete paths. There's several sheds, carports, port additions, those kinds of things on various lots. What they're requesting to do here is bring this property into compliance. This actually came about in 2015 through an ordinance violation that was opened due to some unpermitted mobile homes within the flood plain and some structures being added on to within the flood plain. So we've been working through this process for quite some time. This is the last step in the process that they had to do because upon review of the subject property in 2015, staff verified that there were mobile homes without building permits and flood plain development permits and that the mobile home had exceeded its maximum capacity based on their conditional use permit that they had from 1971. In 1971, they were permitted as a mobile home park, but not to exceed 100 mobile homes. Since they expanded to 119 spaces, staff worked with the state's attorney's office and determined that that essentially nullified their 1971 conditional use permit and negated their grandfathering clause, so they had to bring the entire property into compliance. So they did go through the process of permitting all 13 of the mobile homes that weren't permitted. All of the other mobile homes that are currently located within the park were either deemed legal non-conforming based on the year that they were put there or got the proper building permits and elevation certificates and things along those lines. So like I said, this is the last step in the process to bring this entire park into compliance. The mobile home park, like I said, currently has 119 dedicated spots. However, the agent has indicated to staff that the seven spots in this area right down here, the southernmost seven spots, do not have utility hookups. So they will not be allowed to have mobile homes on them. So their maximum capacity for mobile homes will be 112 within the park. So there was a restriction placed on this park at the time of the ordinance violation in 2015 that prevented additional mobile homes from being moved into the mobile home park until the entire ordinance violation was resolved. So if this conditional use permit is approved, that ordinance violation can be closed and the restriction can be lifted, meaning they can start bringing mobile homes into the park with the proper building permits and flood plain development permits. Since they're entirely within the 100-year flood plain, a flood plain development permit is required for every structure that they put in here, which they are aware of. All of the mobile homes have to be anchored properly, meet all of the flood plain requirements, and any FEMA requirements as well. So there is quite a process that's involved, but they will be able to do so again. When this was routed through the interdepartmental review process, there was just a couple of items that came up beyond the special flood hazard area. 911 would like that all of the mobile homes be labeled with the same type, style, color of lot number on the mobile homes in roughly the same location for ease of emergency services and things along those lines. And the city of Box Elder also stated that if approved, they would request to be notified of the increased potential homes as they are on their sanitary sewer system, and it would increase their monthly bill for the potential capacity. It's my understanding that currently they are being, I guess, prorated for the number of mobile homes that they have on the lot right now, since they were restricted from bringing more in. The city of Box Elder allowed them to be prorated for the 76 mobile homes that they have right now, so that their sewer bill went down for the time being. But if they get approved for this, Box Elder could increase their, their sewer bill again, because they'll have the potential for 112 homes again. So ultimately, staff is recommending approval of conditional use permit 1824 with 22 conditions. And she's not here today.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
I have one question on, on condition 15, about the, the numbers, the lot numbers and so on, posting them.
Yes.
You know, it, I guess it surprises me a little bit that the word preferably is used, because to me, that sounds like if it's just the preference, it's no condition at all. I mean, I understand that that's the language that came out of the comment here, but it just seems like it should be, as a condition, it should be a little more, you know, kind of more firm. You know, it's either has to be this way or it doesn't. And so I don't know if you have a thought on that or...
We can certainly take the word preferably out. I actually did a site visit to this property late last week, and there are actually several mobile homes that don't even have an address right now. So they will have to do some address corrections. So we can certainly take the word preferably out and just make it a requirement that they all be the same style, color, location, those types of things.
Do you see that as being kind of, and do you view, would you view that as being an onerous requirement for the existing mobile homes out there? Or, I mean, do you think that that's something can be accomplished pretty easily?
I would think it'd be something that could be accomplished fairly easily. I mean, I don't think house numbers are an overly expensive item. Usually just require a nail to, you know, put up. I would imagine, just based on past things that we've required within the mobile home park, that the, the property manager will probably just send a letter out to everybody within the mobile home park and put it back on them, making them do it. But I would foresee it as a, a good thing, I guess. There was a couple mobile homes out there that, in emergency services situations, I did have concern that they wouldn't be found because their lot addresses either aren't on there or they're spray painted in a weird spot or, you know, something along those lines.
Well, I guess I would, I'd, I would suggest, I mean, removing the word preferably, just so that that's the standard, that they are the same, same type and style and, you know, air on the side for public safety here.
Okay. Do you want to take it out in the second place as well, where it says preferably reflective? Do you want to take it out in both places?
Yes, I think, yes.
Okay.
Because isn't that part of it, so that it can be seen at night by the public safety people?
Yep, yes.
I would, I would like to abstain from voting on this. As a real estate agent, I've been involved with the sale and listing of many mobile home parks in that area, and I'm not sure if I could be as subjective as would normally be required.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have a couple of questions. Number one, what is the flood hazard? I mean, it's in the flood plain, but what, orient me a little bit. Where's the flood hazard, you know, relative to the location of this?
Let me see here if I can. I don't think I have a map of this. I'll just pull up Rapid Map here for you so that you can see exactly. This whole area is flood plain, so let me... Okay, so right here, all these little roads in here. This is Plains View Mobile Manor, and the blue area is all flood plain, 100-year flood plain.
So where's the main drainage?
What's the source of the hazard, though? Is there water nearby or what? Or is it just real low-lying ground that, you know, tends to collect water? I, I guess...
Let me see if I can turn on the...
I'm not arguing with people far more knowledgeable than I about this, but I'm curious.
There's a main drainage, and I don't remember the name of the specific drainage itself that goes through out there. And yes, is, I know that there is a low-lying, but, so where's the floodway with respect to the flood plain? Is that the red?
The, the red is the floodway.
And what, what drainage is that, do we know?
I was trying to see if this would tell me. I guess I don't know what the source of the drainage is. FEMA just has it designated as a flood plain. These right here are lagoons, those little blue outliers. Abandoned lagoons, I should say.
Okay, so it's, it's more or less a drainage issue as opposed to a live body of water or some source?
Well, right here, this little blue line, that, this little hashed blue line that I just turned on, that's a creek. I, for some reason, it's not telling me what creek it is, but that is a creek right there.
Okay, okay. Okay, I don't want to hold this up with that. I was curious. Okay, thank you. My other question is, now, I'm, I'm a little concerned about how, how strong our regulations are going to be here on these tie-downs and all this stuff. I mean, we have older mobile homes, but all of these are subjected to the same standard for buoyancy and all of that stuff or hazards from, from flooding, right? We're not going to have some that are grandfathered somehow and they don't have to comply.
Well, the ones that were there, they're called pre-firm. Is that what they're called, PJ?
Yes.
The ones that were there pre-firm, meaning pre when the flood plain map was put in, those ones actually don't have to comply with the current regulations. So we have gone through the process of determining which ones do need to comply and which ones don't, but as they bring in replacements, they'll all have to comply, all the replacements and all the new ones.
Under current conditions, the majority or the minority of...
The majority of them are currently anchored properly, meet all of the current flood plain requirements. The only reason there was...
The non-conforming ones or whatever would be a minority.
Yes, yeah. There's very few of them that are legal non-conforming, I guess you could call them. The only reason that there was 13 of them essentially that didn't get the proper flood plain development permits was there was a change in management. One set of manager was doing everything, getting all of the elevation certificates, flood plain development permits, all that kind of stuff. And then there was a manager that wasn't for a period of time, and now the gal who manages it now is trying to essentially clean that part up.
Okay. Okay, that's all, that's all I have.
Okay, further questions?
I'll move to approve conditional use permit 1824.
Second.
Motion and second. And I guess I would ask real quick, does that include or not include taking out the words preferably in, in condition 15?
Do you still agree with removing those words? Yeah. Yeah, plus the removal of the words preferably in that condition.
So that include, that's included in your motion?
Yes.
Included in the second?
Correct.
Okay. Further discussion on the, on the item? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign.
I am abstaining.
Okay, thank you. Brings us to, motion carries, excuse me, item number 20.
Thank you.
Item 20 is county board report. The Board of Commissioners concur with the Planning Commission's recommendations from the July 9, 2018 Planning Commission meeting.
Nothing to add there.
Nothing to add.
All right. Seeing we have no more members from the public, we will go to item 22.
Items from staff. So just a reminder that the 2018 South Dakota Planners Conference is going to be in Huron this year from October 17 through the 18th. If anybody is interested, just let us know, we'll, we pay for the transportation and for your lodging. We haven't received anything more about this conference than what we talked about last meeting.
What is typically, what, I mean, is, is there like sessions that you go to, such a thing, or what's the format or the agenda?
Usually, everybody in attendance goes to the same thing. It's not, there's not a lot of breakouts, and sometimes the conference can be very focused on a certain topic. Couple of years ago, it was about the sign regulations because of the Supreme Court decision, Gilbert versus Reed, but we don't know what this year is going to be until we see a proposed agenda.
Who puts it on?
There's a state association for planners.
Okay. Go ahead, Kathy.
So maybe you told us this last time, I forget, but I'm assuming this rotates around in different locations, this conference?
In the state, yes.
Does it ever come to Rapid City?
Do you remember since you've been here if it's been here? Closest one's been Spearfish, but two years ago, or a year ago.
Closest was Spearfish. Uh huh.
Yeah.
We'd have to research that.
Okay, well, I mean, I don't, it doesn't matter. I was just thinking that maybe next year it'd be here, for example, so, but you're not, it's not likely.
I'm not really sure how that works.
Okay.
Yeah. We don't really have anybody on the executive board or anybody. We're members just to get the information and keep the contacts up, but other than that, we're not that involved in it.
Yep, okay, fair enough, thank you.
Item B, is that okay, Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Item B, onsite wastewater installer training for this year is October 5 here in Rapid City. This is something that our office offers every other year to all of our installers so they can stay current on their certifications, and so they can stay current on our, our list. It will be at the Journey Museum, and it starts from 7:30, goes till 4:30. And again, same thing, if you'd like to go, just let us know ahead of time because we have to order food from the caterers.
Is that a certification program or continuing education?
Continuing education.
Okay.
And then I have one more.
Go ahead.
So as you have in front of you today, there's the white binders for the Planning Commission packet, and then the black binders hold all the ordinances and pertinent information that we wanted to give you. So Commissioner Rundy, Commissioner Coleman, the ones that you first received were kind of the beta prototypes, so these new black ones will replace those. If there's anything in there you'd like to transfer over, you know, whenever you're ready, you can just give us the old ones back. But I saw that a lot of people had ease of, for the, for the staff report, ease of moving the papers over. There wasn't the ripping that there usually is with that. But again, they're available online usually around Thursday afternoon, Thursday evening, and if you'd like, you can come in and pick up your packets. Otherwise, they'll be waiting here for you in the morning because we're not mailing them anymore.
Are you saying the packet that I received a couple of weeks ago, this replaces it?
The black binder?
Yeah.
Yes, that will replace that.
Okay, so I can leave?
Just leave that here, yes, and we'll reuse the stuff that's in there, unless it has something, some notes or something on it. We'll just copy, recopy the page and then use it for something else.
I'll go through it and let you know.
So those white, the white binders, when you're done, unless you just leave those here, we'll reuse those every meeting. If you want the packet itself inside, feel free to take it. But nothing further.
I normally will probably print mine off and review and write notes on the items in the, when, in my printout, so I'm not actually sure I'll need this every meeting, but that's just speaking for me. And then the black stays here, correct?
You take it with you. Yep, you take it with you. If you'd like to keep it here, we can make sure we bring it down.
Any other items?
No.
Okay. Item 23, items from the membership.
I'm sorry, what?
Items from the membership. Do you have anything to bring forth?
No.
Okay. That brings us to item 24. I'd entertain a motion for adjournment.
So move.
Dawkins.
Motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.